I'd like to start this meeting of the Oldsville Town Council, Monday, September 28, Jimmy Durner, would you like to lead us in prayer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and thank you for this wonderful old town we serve. We thank you for all the many employees we have. We thank you for the inhabitants we have. We ask you to continue to lead and guide us in a way that would please be, that would make this town better for education and living and enjoying life. We ask you to be these council members tonight as they make the decisions that will affect that. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Sandy Rocco.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Scott Oldham. William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes for regular meetings, September 14, 2020, and executive session on September 21, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Go ahead and take it, William. I wasn't here for that meeting.
I wasn't either, so I can't second it.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and second. Okay, any council comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott, William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is actions to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, any council comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, there is no resolutions tonight, no ordinances on first reading, ordinance on second reading, adopting the budget, the 2021 budget. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt the 2021 budget.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any council comments or questions on the budget? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, Sandy Rocco, please.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, there is no old business, no flood report. Darla, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
Okay. I will speak.
Go ahead, Mike.
This is Michael Farmer. Yeah, I don't know if this is where I should insert this, but as I said at the last meeting, we're about to take possession of the property on Vine Street that will allow us to have two properties to start working on some flood mitigation in the Vine Street area. We've also talked to G.L. Chandler about incorporating his property, which is about the size of one, about, it's about the size of Chad Stevens' property in space, and so it gives us a lot of property to work with. I'll remind you that a flood plan is our next step in working on the Vine Street project, and the price tag on that is approximately $60,000. We had a quote for $56,000, is like $56,554, I believe, for a plan, but now that we have other properties that we are going to try to incorporate into the plan, it probably will exceed $60,000, give or take a couple thousand, and I just don't have that number because I haven't asked them to revise a quote. Currently, our annual revenues in stormwater are $176,876. The 2021 budget for the stormwater is $177,137, and including in that is salaries and benefits, materials, sand removal, contractual other, contractual education, and then other services, and then there's a long-term debt, and that is the payment of 105 East Vine Street purchase and payments on the 104 West Vine Street purchases for the money borrowed, and they are about $33,700 a year. I know I've thrown a lot of numbers on you, but, so, when you add all that up, it comes to the $177,000 that exceeds our annual revenue. So, as you can see, just maintaining what we have now, there's not a lot of extra money to be had. We do project $142,000, actually about $143,000 in cash balance in unused funds from the past, and so that might be where we would pay for the plans to proceed with the flood mitigation on Vine Street, and then I'm projecting about $10,000 for dumping and material fees to prep the site to start working on it. So that's just for preparation, once we demolish the existing building and prep the site to start a project. So that, between the plans and prep work, you're looking at at least $70,000. So, there is a cash balance that we could take that from, and it's something you should consider. I propose that the board and myself and maybe Danny talk about stormwater projects and what our future looks like, but this does not include any of the other projects, stormwater projects that I think would be under a flood report, projects that we have in the Meadowlands, other neighborhoods, and so our needs exceed our funds. So I think we ought to talk about where we want to put our money, do we want to move forward with Vine Street, and I think maybe a work session's in order, and if not a work session, then there's going to be a lot of information, go back and forth, and I'll be emailing you some additional information in the near future, so we can talk about this perhaps at the next meeting. I did not include that we have a sweeper currently, one sweeper for our entire town. We used to have two, and we bought an upgraded sweeper in 2008, and the other two we had were probably over 20 years old, and that we just, you know, they just went into the dustbin, and so our sweeper is now 12 years old, and so we'll be looking at replacing it sooner than later, and it's probably going to be $200,000. So as our town grows, obviously, we need at least one sweeper, maybe we need one old sweeper and buy a new one or trade it in, but all these things come into how we spend our money for the stormwater, and as I said, next year's budget, just for things that we are contractually bound to pay now, we're going to exceed our revenues, and so any cash balance we have, we can easily spend it up in one or two years if we were being aggressive about stormwater projects. So, a lot of information, I know, and I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting and in the weeks following the next meeting, but I just wanted to put that out there, that everybody needs to be thinking about it, we need to talk about it, and we need to decide what to do. It's probably the second time I've said this in the last six months, but at some point in our future, we are going to have to elevate stormwater utility to, if not equal status to water and sewer utility, then somewhere close by where it's our first cousin. And, you know, not too long ago, I said something about bringing the parks department up to equal status with some of the other departments, so I hate to be heavy-handed about putting things on the board, but we need to talk about the storm utility in the near future. So, any questions?
I would like to do that in a work session.
Okay, well, I'll put it out for when you want that work session, and then we can all talk about it. Email, I'll send out the information, and then I appreciate it if you singularly talk to me through an email, so it doesn't come out like a meeting or anything, and so if you'll just, and then I'll just share everybody's information, and I don't think I have anything else to say about it.
Okay.
And I do have just kind of a general question.
Yes.
Do you have any suggestions of how to just bridge this gap without increasing the burden on our taxpayers?
I have none. There's really no, it's a dilemma. I mean, you know, it's, I mean, it's important that we keep up with our stormwater work, and as the town gets bigger and as we spread out, our duties and responsibilities will increase as we increase our areas to maintain as far as recouping salt and sand that we put down during the winter months. Obviously, street sweeper duties will increase, and so it's just part of growing up, and as our town grows, our duties grow, and it costs money, so, I mean, it's a dilemma.
I agree. I just, but at the same time, as the town grows, our revenues should be naturally growing also, so I think that's one, definitely something we're going to have to figure out on the work session, where the shortfalls are with both sides of the equation.
Right, and we have some calculated numbers to respond to any questions about something like that.
Anyone else have a question for Mike on the council? I do note that Scott Oldham is on Sandy, so... Any public comment for Mike?
Dan?
Yes.
Yeah, I would be interested in seeing a priority list. There's a lot on the town's plate for stormwater. It's all needed. What sequence should it be done in? Who's got the most priority? How do we look at stretching this out as far as we can over a number of years to minimize the taxpayer impact?
I agree, Russ, and I think, I think there's a lot of information thrown out there, so I think this will probably take a couple work sessions to get figured out. So, we'll keep you informed when those work sessions are, if you would like to view them or attend them, or however we're doing things in the future.
Okay, I appreciate that, but at the end of your process, if you could come up with a list that says, okay, here's our grocery list of things we'd like to do, here's priority 1, 2, 3, 4.
Sure.
And that way we can focus on the...
We have that for us. We do have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I'm seeing none, we shall move on. Under new business, animal shelter, or fiscal year 2021. Sandy?
Well, we got this last week. It's just like every other agreement, I didn't see any change other than the price. We had budgeted $20,000, and the, unfortunately, the information came to us after we finished our budget process, so it's like, close to $2,900 short in the budget, but I think I can make that up in miscellaneous services, so I don't see a problem with it. I know Scott always likes to review the, how many animals was taken in from Elletsville, and that is included in your packet. The cost per animal this year is $210.62, and in Elletsville, there was 11 animals picked up by the animal control officers, and there was 68 surrendered. That means people had animals and brought them to the shelter, either they found them or could no longer keep them, and there was 28 strays, so for 100, and that makes a total of 107 animals that were taken to the animal shelter, and this is from 2019's information. They have to go back a few years to give us some numbers so that they can calculate the agreement. So the total for the agreement is 22,000... A second, I gotta go back a page. Or two. 22,53634.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
No, but I have a question, and maybe we've talked about this in previous years, but I know there's an animal shelter in Owen County, and I know there's one in Morgan County for sure. Why, why are they, people surrendering animals to Monroe County, and why is Monroe County taking them? That good question? Does anybody know, or?
That was, that's always been a policy. I don't, I don't know why, but I do know through the years, when we've looked at this, they've always taken animals from other surrounding counties, and they don't charge them anything, and that was the one of the arguments we used when they asked us for extra funds, so I guess we would need some more information on that one. I do have the name of the city attorney this came from. Did you see it when I forwarded the information? Would have been in the email. If not, I can...
I can go back to it.
Do we need to table this until next meeting?
It was just a question that I had. I don't know that you need to table it. I was just curious, I know those two counties have animal shelters, and the others may too, but, so I don't know why Monroe County's taking them, but I don't know if that would affect how they make the division or not, so if you want to table, I'm happy to ask that question.
I think that's a really good question, so, how's the rest of the council feel?
I'd like to have a question.
Okay.
And just for some history on this, we've been contributing for several years now, and we, the county pays into this, and the city, Bloomington, owns the shelter, so we pay the same rate of county tax that everyone else in the county pays, and this animal control fee is coming out of the county, but then we get an extra portion, and they claim it's because we are an incorporated area, so it has been an interesting situation that we, you know, I've always felt like it was a double payment, but that's me.
Well, that always brings up the question, too, is what Steinsville's charge? They're incorporated as well.
And, and as Darla talked about, out-of-county animals, there's 543 animals that came to the shelter out of county compared to our 107.
Well, I definitely think this warrants to look into it a little bit more. Darla, would you mind following up on those?
Sure.
Okay. Do we need a motion to table this?
Please.
All right, I'd entertain a motion for tabling the shelter interlocal for fiscal year 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis. Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good. Next on the agenda, the Richland Township Fire Service Agreement. Mike Corman?
Hello, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What you have is the proposed fire service agreement for Richland Township and the town of Oldsville, and it is adequate funding that we'll need through miscellaneous revenues to run my budget for 2021.
Okay, is there a motion for this township fire service agreement?
So moved.
Who made the second? Who made that second?
Scott can have it if he...
I don't care, either way.
Any council comment, questions? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing no public. Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Next on the agenda is a request to hire a utilities billing clerk. Mike Corman?
Yes, yes. Recently, we had an opening in the department for a billing clerk. We had six or seven good applicants. We whittled it down to three applicants, Sandy Hash, Amber Regal, and Becky Wine, the billing department manager. They interviewed the applicants we selected, and they picked Dee Elizabeth Medley as the one we want to hire. We looked to get approval from the town board tonight to hire her. She's a local person of the community, and the ladies think she'll make a really good employee, and so I'm asking your permission now to fill that.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to hire new utility billing clerk. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for utilities to hire their new utility billing clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any council comments, questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Department of Public Works request to purchase three new mowers.
I guess, I guess I've been asked to speak to this as well. So Jeff Corman sent out an email to everyone about these purchases. Unfortunately, it didn't get on the agenda, but we did it.
I added it to the, I added it to the work packet agenda.
Okay, thanks, Sandy. So, the Elletsville wastewater treatment plant has a, currently has a Kubota we're going to trade in, the purchase price of these new machines, Sandy, I don't have that with me. I know it's $23,000 and a few extra dollars. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes, for the two for public works with the trade-ins, the total cost is $23,000.
Thank you, and that, so switching gears, I'll come back to wastewater treatment plant. So, so it's $23,000, and that's with a trade-in of two 20-year-old Taurus, and that's what we're replacing, and so the money will come out of the Water Replacement Vehicle Fund, the Sewer Replacement Vehicle Fund, and Sandy, I want to need your help again, the street departments, which fund does it come out of?
It's going to come out of the MVH.
MVH, thanks. And so each department will pay $7,667 that allows to make those purchases. Currently, the Water Replacement Fund has $33,000 in it for these specific types of purchases. The Sewer Replacement Fund has $28,000 ready for these types of purchases, and the MVH Fund is funded for this purchase as well. So, I would ask permission to purchase those two for the Department of Public Works, and we are also trading in a Kubota for the wastewater treatment plant, specifically for the wastewater treatment plant, and with the trade-in plus $2,500 from the Equipment Replacement Fund, we propose to buy a third mower, but I don't, I'm on my iPhone, so I can go back and try to see what the purchase price of it is originally. I don't, I don't have that number, but I do know...
Well, Mike, they got it in their packets, they've got the quotes for the mowers, and it says that we got $8,000 for the Kubota and $2,000 for a SAG turf tiger.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a 22-year-old mower.
And the total difference is just $2,500, so...
And as I said, that'd come out of the Equipment Replacement Fund, so I'm looking for permission to buy three mowers for two different entities, if you will, one for the wastewater treatment plant, two for the Department of Public Works, and they're all funded.
Mike, it looks like the price of the mower is $13,999.
Thank you. I didn't have that number, and I'm trying to go back and forth on my iPhone, so, thanks. Any questions?
In our packets, was there only, I thought there was only two mowers we were purchasing. Is the third one, was it, Sandy, did you put that in our packet?
Yeah, there's two sheets there. The first one is the one for the sewer treatment plant, and the price is $13,999 minus the trade-ins, and so it was only $2,500, and then the second sheet was for two mowers at $13,999, and then it says net, so the net was $13,500, and then $1,000 off for two mowers, so it was 27 for the net price for two mowers, and then the trade-in took $2,000 off, and so it's $23,000 for those two mowers.
Okay.
It's the last, the last sheet in your packet.
Okay, and we're trading in two mowers or three?
Actually, actually, four, two from the wastewater treatment plant and two from the Department of Public Works, and they're all around 20 years older, better. We've made them last, but our mowing duties are getting bigger, and our mowers are getting older.
Got you. I'm just looking at this in the packet, and I just seen the two mowers. I guess I read it wrong or something, so...
Well, the, next to the last page is the one mower for $13,999 for the sewer plant, and it has the two trade-ins above that for $8,000 and $2,000, and the second one has the trade-in for two mowers at $2,000, and then two mowers at $13,999. and the one, and then two mowers at thirteen nine ninety-nine. So if you go all the way over to the right-hand column, you see the total for those two mowers.
Okay, I see now, all right. It, it was cut off on my, on my thing, all right. Nevermind. Um, and, and these are all Ferris mowers, we're getting zero turns?
They are, and we're buying them locally from uh, from Richards.
Great. Um, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to uh purchase one lawnmower for the wastewater treatment plant and two additional mowers for the Department of Public Works.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any council comment, questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
All right, Mike, um, does that put us pretty much up to date on mowers?
Yeah, it, it sure does.
Great, great.
We're, we'll be in really good shape. We appreciate the support of the town board to uh supply us with a good working equipment. I really do appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike. All right, next item is privilege of the floor. Anyone in the audience have any non-agenda items they'd like to discuss? Please use your raise your hand feature, and I will call on you. All right, I am not seeing any. We will go down to supervisors' comments. Mike, would you like to start? Mike Farmer?
I have nothing, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mike, um, you might want to tell them about our new guy that started today. I know they don't have to approve those anymore, but you might let them know.
Well, um, we hired a TFT to finish out the um leaf season and mowing season. Of course, there's not much mowing going on right now um with the dry weather, but it's going to come back. And we just got a TFT labor we hired uh until the first of the year. And his name, he's the new guy, and his name is Guy Walz. So um, we just got a little extra help in here to help us get through the season.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Hey, you're welcome.
Uh, Mike Corman?
I have nothing.
Danny Stalkett?
I have nothing.
Kevin?
Nothing here.
This is easy. Jimmy Darnold?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, did I miss anyone? Sandy?
Um, I would just like everyone to come in uh in the next couple of days and sign the ordinance for the um budget. I have to have that submitted in the gateway within five days of passage, so I'm going to need that one quickly. I'll have them all ready for you tomorrow, um, and so whenever you can stop by.
Okay. Any council comment?
Actually, I just have a really not, it's a county-wide comment, but uh both the Democrats, I think, and Republicans need poll workers for the election. So I don't know how Elletsville precincts look, but just a call if anybody wants to get involved. Our very own Pam Samples is handling it. Get in touch with her.
All right, Pam, do you have an email they can get ahold of you with?
Yeah, pollrecruiter@gmail.com.
Okay, any further council comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion and second, Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Old, Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager? Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at seven oh five PM.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.